Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Welcome. It being 7:30 on Tuesday, September 20th, 2022, we will begin our town council meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a moment of silence for all those who serve in our military at home and abroad and for their families. Thank you. And Clerk Samino will begin the meeting with a roll call vote, please.
Council Barrika?
Here.
Council Flaherty?
Here.
Council Hume?
Here.
Council Mackin?
Here.
Council Maglio?
Here.
Council O'Brien?
President.
Council Reynolds is not in attendance. Council Ringus?
Here.
Council Ryan?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Samino. We do have a council member who is participating remotely this evening. Council O'Brien is on the phone, therefore, all votes will be by roll call this evening. At this time, we'll start with our announcements. I'd like to turn it over to Councilor Ryan for a proclamation.
Okay. So, we have a proclamation for its, I'll just read it. It's whereas Gordon Thompson, CEO, Westnet Inc., started this company in 1994 focusing on financial and marketing consultation to minority-owned small businesses, and whereas Gordon Thompson shifted the company focus to a medical and life science supply distribution business, and whereas Gordon Thompson founded the Massachusetts Youth Committed to Winning, the NYCW, a nonprofit for inner-city youth program, and whereas Gordon Thompson, CEO, Westnet Inc., which he started, is one of the largest minority-owned businesses in Massachusetts, and now therefore be it resolved by the council of the town of Braintree that the council hereby applauds and extends a hearty congratulations to Gordon Thompson for all the business success and philanthropic work he has accomplished. So, we did a proclamation for Gordon, and he is located in Braintree, and we wanted to say well done and congratulations, Gordon. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Councilor Ryan. Are there any other announcements from councilors this evening? Okay, I would like to announce tomorrow, the Braintree Partnership will be holding its fifth annual Community Heroes Award banquet. I would like to extend congratulations to this year's recipients, including Braintree resident Jennifer Lynn, Braintree resident John Griffin, Assistant Director of Special Services at our elementary schools Milo Wolfran, and Assistant District Attorney for the Norfolk District Attorney's Office Jennifer Rowe for their contributions for supporting prevention and substance use prevention in Braintree. So, congratulations to all, and thank you for all the work you do. Okay, any other announcements? All right. That move on to approval of minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of June 7th, 2022?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, councilors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Samino, roll call vote, please.
Council Barrika?
Yes.
Council Flaherty?
Yes.
Council Hume?
Aye.
Council Mackin?
Aye.
Council Maglio?
Aye.
Council O'Brien?
Aye.
Council Reynolds?
Aye.
Council Ringus?
Aye.
Council Ryan?
Aye.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you very much. That is unanimous. I would like to recognize and thank all of our department heads who are in attendance with us this evening, Chiefs O'Brien and Chief Dubois, Deputy Chief Cahoon and Deputy Chief Want, DPW Director Jim Arsenault, and members of our Braintree Police Department who have joined us this evening. I hope I didn't forget anyone, and if I did, I apologize. Oh, thank you. And Director of Finance Ed Spellman is also with us, as is our town clerk, Jim Casey. So, before we go into our formal agenda, I would like to ask if there are no objections from council members, I would like to take Order 22048 out of order so we can begin our meeting with our home rule petition for Officer Matthew Donahue.
No objections.
Thank you. Seeing none, we will move on then to 22048. Mayor, home rule petition, retirement of Officer Matthew Donahue, or take up any action relative thereto. At this point, I will turn to Councilor Reynolds, Chairman of the Ways and Means Committee, for their recommendation.
Thank you, Madam President. Last evening, the Ways and Means Committee voted unanimously for favorable recommendation up to the full council on Order 22048.
Thank you very much, Council Reynolds. And I've also asked councilors Ryan and Hume to read two letters of support into the record. So, Councilor Hume, if you don't mind starting?
I sure will.
Thank you.
This is a letter from Mark Dubois, Chief of Police. Braintree Town Council, please accept my endorsement in this letter of support for the passage of the Act providing for the retirement of Matthew Donahue, a police officer in the town of Braintree. Matthew Donahue has been employed as a police officer in Braintree since January of 2017. Prior to his employment with Braintree, Officer Donahue served with distinction with the Massachusetts Army National Guard, including a deployment to Afghanistan in 2012. In September 2012, immediately following his service with the National Guard, he was hired as a police officer for the town of Duxbury until getting hired in Braintree in January 2017. During his entire time with the Braintree Police, Officer Donahue has served in the Uniformed Patrol Division. He has also been a field training officer, TASER instructor, and union president. Officer Donahue has also received multiple awards and letters of recommendation, excuse me, recognition and commendation. During his career, Officer Donahue has also been involved in numerous critical incidents and extraordinary circumstances, with the most recent being June 4th, 2021. Officer Donahue was working a day shift on June 4th, 2021, when he was called to respond to a report of a violent domestic disturbance on McCusker Drive. As the suspect fled, a K-9 was called in to assist. Officer Cushing responded with his K-9 partner kit. Officer Donahue volunteered to serve as a cover officer assisting Officer Cushing and Officer Seibert for a wooded search. Within a few minutes, the officers and K-9 found themselves under attack by a hidden gunman. K-9 kit was killed, Officer Cushing grievously injured, and Officer Donahue was struck by gunfire. Donahue was shot in the arm which exited his back, but valiantly returned fire. As K-9 kit lay dead between the suspect and the Braintree officers, the suspect continued to fire. All three officers returned fire to stop the threat. Once the threat was mitigated, both Seibert and Donahue provided immediate care of Officer Cushing, potentially saving his life. The department was fortunate to have Officer Donahue working on June 4th. He selfishly and without hesitation volunteered to assist in a wooded search for an armed suspect. He volunteered, knowing his fellow officers needed assistance in searching very difficult terrain. Officer Donahue possessed the skills, experience, and demeanor to help resolve that incident, which could have been tragically different if not for his participation. However, the sights, sounds, and experience of that day is something that continues to stay with me. Because of the effect this trauma has had on Officer Donahue, I respectfully request favorable action on this petition. My hope is that the Braintree community will support Officer Donahue so that he may retire and continue to care for his young family. Respectfully submitted, Mark W. Dubois, Chief of Police.
Thank you, Councilor Hume. Councilor Ryan?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. This letter is from the Braintree Police Officers Association to the Braintree Town Council Members regarding home rule petition, retirement of Officer Matthew Donahue, council members. Is it, I'm sorry, it is with respect, honor, and compassion that the Braintree Police Officers Association and the Braintree Police Superior Officers Association support and request favorable action on the home rule petition, retirement of Officer Matthew Donahue. To know and work with Officer Donahue is a privilege and an honor. He is the type of person that will and has gone above and beyond for the town of Braintree and its residents, and has embodied what it means to be a police officer for the town of Braintree. Officer Donahue was first hired as a police officer in September of 2012 by the Duxbury Police Department, following a deployment to Afghanistan. In January of 2017, Officer Donahue was hired and sworn in as a Braintree Police Officer. Throughout his career in Braintree, he has received multiple awards to include, but not limited to, letters of commendation, the Life Saving Medal, and the Medal of Valor, TOPCOP 2022, which was a national award, and multiple letters of recognition by residents of Braintree. Officer Donahue has been assigned to the Patrol Division throughout his career with Duxbury and Braintree. He has assumed the roles of Field Training Officer, TASER Instructor, and BPOA Union President while working in Braintree. Spending his career in the Patrol Division aiding the public has put Officer Donahue at the forefront of many critical incidents throughout his career, the most recent occurring on June 4th, 2021. On June 4th, 2021, Officer Donahue was working the day shift around 12:45 hours. Officers were dispatched to a domestic violence call where the suspect had left on foot and was reported armed. As the investigation was progressing, Officer Cushing and his patrol K-9 kit were requested to locate the suspect. Officer Donahue was on a report and left the station to aid in locating the suspect. Eventually, security footage showed where the suspect entered the woods. Due to the location, a third officer was requested to assist Officer Cushing, Seibert, and K-9 kit with the K-9 track. Officer Donahue immediately and without hesitation grabbed his radio to be that third officer. Upon his arrival, the K-9 track began. Soon after beginning the track, the suspect was located behind a rock. After the commands to drop the gun, the suspect suddenly opened fire on Officers Seibert, Cushing, and Donahue and K-9 kit. All three officers engaged the suspect with returned fire. K-9 kit was shot multiple times, as well as Officer Cushing and Donahue. Officer Donahue returned fire and was quickly struck with gunshot wound to his left arm above his elbow. It was later determined the bullet traveled up his arm and out his back. Officer Donahue continued to return fire on the suspect with his department-issued handgun. Even with a gunshot wound to his arm, he never stopped. He reloaded using his wounded arm and fired his handgun again until the threat was stopped. With the suspect down and his arm wounded, Officer Donahue and Seibert moved beyond K-9 kit to the suspect. Officer Donahue provided cover to the suspect while Officer Seibert rendered aid to Officer Cushing and evaluated K-9 kit. Unfortunately, Officer Seibert was not able to assist K-9 kit. He had already succumbed to his wounds. Although officers trained for violent encounters throughout their careers, this incident was one where there can be no adequate preparation. This is because the extreme violence of this up-close and personal gun battle was more akin to what can be seen on the battlefield rather than a police call for service. The conditions and circumstances of this incident have had profound impacts on the families involved, the community of Braintree, the Braintree Police Department, and Officer Seibert. To be ambushed by a suspect providing returned fire, suffering a gunshot wound, witnessing the sights and sounds of K-9 kit as he was shot multiple times, and then provide cover so Officer Seibert could safely render life-saving aid to his fellow officers is both extraordinary and traumatizing. Once additional help arrived, Officer Donahue walked out with assistance to a waiting ambulance that transported him to Boston Medical Center. He was treated for his wounds and injuries, including a fractured shoulder. Later on, through treatment, it was determined Officer Donahue had additional injuries, including his left dead-toed muscle was torn off the bone and was shrinking away to nothing. Additional surgery was necessary to reattach the muscle to the bone and rebuild the muscle. Following surgery, Officer Donahue was determined to continue his career and get back to serving the residents of Braintree. He worked hard to recover from his injuries and ensure he was ready to come back to work on full duty. During this time, his dedication to the department and town showed, as he participated in promotional exam for sergeant and was an elected union president. In March of 2022, Officer Donahue came back to work. Shortly after returning, the trauma of the incident began affecting him in ways he could not have imagined. His drive to continue as a police officer continued as he sought additional help to get through the trauma. After months of seeking help from multiple medical professionals, it was determined he could no longer perform the essential duties as a police officer. Due to the trauma Officer Donahue experienced that day and its residual effects, the BPOA and the BPSO request favorable action so that Officer Donahue may retire and be returned to his family under the most supportive conditions which this act provides. Thank you for your time and consideration. Respectfully, Shawn Diaz, Vice President, Braintree Police Office Association. And what a story in a letter to have to read, and it's my honor to read that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Ryan. Would anyone from the mayor's office like to speak on this? Mary Kacoris, welcome. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, Madam President, councilors. I rise in support of this home rule petition for Officer Donahue. Officer, the last thing that Officer Donahue would like to have happen is what is happening now. His entire life was dedicated to being a police officer, as so many folks we have here tonight have also done. And this incident was an extraordinary incident, which required Officer Donahue, Officer Cushing, and Officer Seibert to take extraordinary actions along with K-9 kit. And the unfortunate part of the heroic actions of these three officers in K-9 leave scars and leave very difficult memories that don't go away. And as mayor, it's very difficult to stand before you and recall the conversations that I've had with these members of our police department, and understanding that they walk into these situations every day, no matter what, and stand up to protect the public. Specifically tonight, as we talked about Officer Donahue, he is a tremendous officer and has served our community in the greatest way possible. To have taken shots, taken bullets into his body, and to return fire to protect others is extraordinary, and I think that our community as a whole will always be broken from this incident. It's not an incident that you ever heal from. It's an incident that will always be in your memory, and I think that in order for us to try to do everything we can to assist Officer Donahue in his future and his life with his family is to, at minimal, pass this piece of legislation and move it to the State House. But I personally want to just take a moment to thank Officer Donahue for his heroic actions on that day, and wish him the best. And with that, I thank you for taking the time and hope that you move forward in a positive direction with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there anyone else from the mayor's office who would like to speak? Chief Dubois?
Thank you. I just want to reinforce the significance of this incident. It was recognized as probably one of the 10 most significant incidents last year, and they were honored in Washington, DC during Police Week. And also, we were notified that the three officers are going to receive the Hanner Award from the governor's office in November, November 1st, which is also pretty extraordinary, recognizing the significance of this incident. And I've had the privilege of working with all three of these officers and knowing what's taken place, you know, in their recovery since this incident took place. And I can tell you, and what the mayor said is, this is the last thing that Officer Donahue wanted to happen, and I saw firsthand his determination to return to work, full duty. His physical injuries took quite some time to heal. It was about nine months, and he worked extremely hard to recover physically. And throughout that whole time, his psychological injury, he was working on, and I know he put a significant amount of effort into it, and he still does, because this is something that I don't think is going to heal. And that's why we're here today. So, I just respectfully ask for your full endorsement of this home rule petition, and I think it's well deserved, and it's, I think personally, the least we can do for Officer Donahue. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Dubois. Any councilors? Councilor Hume?
Thank you, Madam President. When I saw this was on our agenda, this was a no-brainer. I don't think there's any discussion necessary. The letters of support are phenomenal, all of you being here, first responders, police and fire. I am 100% in support of this. Every police officer, firefighter, leaves their house, leaves their family every day to serve and protect all the residents of Braintree. This was a tragic incident. It doesn't, to me personally, does not matter what the cost is, this officer and his family are well-deserving of this. I fully support this, and Chief Dubois, you've been a hands-on chief. This is no different, like you were there for these officers, and we as a community should be there for all them. So, I'm fully supporting this for Officer Donahue tonight.
Thank you very much, Councilor Hume. Council Flaherty?
I voted in support of this last night, simply because Officer Donahue's service to Braintree has been exceptional, and it's worth noting that the sacrifice he's made in the course of carrying out his duties has also been exceptional. I think all of our first responders have a right to expect that the community that they serve will support them after an event of this magnitude, and I know that Braintree definitely does want to. I think Officer Donahue's actions certainly merit the terms of this home rule petition, and I am happy to support it for those reasons.
Thank you, Councilor Flaherty. Any other councilors wish to speak on this matter? Councilor Ryan?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say I fully support this. I want to thank all of the police officers and firefighters that are here tonight. I want to thank Officer Donahue for his commitment and what he's given for the town of Braintree and the residents of Braintree. As a counselor, we're the legislative branch of the town, and we vote on, these are the kind of things that I'm proud that we can support, and I'm proud of the town council. We've always voted to support our public safety departments, and tonight is going to be no different. I think you're going to see us fully 100% support this, and I'm very proud, and it's the 100% right thing to do. So, thank you for everyone coming here tonight in support as well.
Thank you, Councilor Ryan. Councilor Reynolds?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm not going to add anything further beyond what has been adequately, and I should say more than adequately, said about the type of sense of duty our police officers have in, and that Officer Donahue has demonstrated. It's my belief that every one of these officers, when they take on the job, certainly understand the extraordinary types of situations they could find themselves in. Life and death is a reality when these gentlemen and ladies go out on patrol. Unfortunately, the United States today, it's become all too common, and these officers all need to know that in times like this, when violently injured officers who survive the violence will have 100% backing of their community, that they will not have to worry about their future, income, the well-being of their families, but also the well-being of the officers who continue with their patrols. A lot of these officers, unfortunately, not only have physical injuries, they have what we call invisible injuries. Having worked with a lot of different folks who have PTSD, it is, it's a terrible, terrible thing that they have to continue to live their lives with, but what will make it easier, anything that the community can do for them. And I'm very proud, that word has been used, but I'm very proud of the community of Braintree and the way that we unflinchingly stand up for those who are willing to make selfless sacrifices on behalf of the community that they protect. So, we beyond what we do here in Braintree, I think we also have to focus on what's going on at the state level. We know that the state legislature is the final deciding body on this home rule petition. Unfortunately, it's become a difficult task to have accomplished. Again, I think that the challenge is, is that it is becoming all too common, but we in the town of Braintree and this council, I think, can play a major role in influencing our state legislatures, our state legislature in particular in the Commonwealth, to support any legislation such as the violent injury to police officers legislation that has been proposed in the past, and that we as a community need to send a very, very strong message to the legislature, that we need their help at the municipal level to ensure that every single public safety personnel who finds themselves in a situation similar to what we have seen with Officer Donahue won't have to worry about going through the process, but that there is an upfront 100% commitment to helping out this type of sense of selflessness that these individuals exhibit on a daily basis. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilor Reynolds. Councilor Ringus?
Thank you, President Barrika. Obviously, I rise in support of this tonight. As Councilor Hume said, there are certain matters of legislation that we vote on that don't take a lot of thought. Hearing those letters read into the record by both Councilor Hume and Councilor Ryan obviously get to the circumstances of what the officer's encountered on that day, the line that continues to stick out to me was that what they encountered was more akin to what can be seen on a battlefield rather than a police call for service. And although every single first responder from our police, our fire department know that they don't know what to expect every day when they walk out of the house and start their shift, they are committed to protecting and serving our community, and at this point, it is time for this town and for this council to protect and serve Officer Donahue in assistance on this measure. I fully support it, as I said, and I don't add anything that hasn't been mentioned here by councilors. I just offer thanks. Thank you to the mayor, the mayor's office, to Chief Dubois for their support of Officer Donahue through this process. Thank you to his fellow officers, both in the police department and the fire department, in offering their support here tonight. Thank you to Officer Donahue's family, because obviously, they were put through a very traumatic event, and hopefully now, there'll be a lot more time spent with them. Thank you to Officer Donahue, who should be applauded for the efforts he made in trying to return to service. He put, obviously, from what we've heard, a tremendous amount of effort into continuing his career. It's unfortunate that this incident leads to this, but it is definitely something that this town must be supportive of. A lot of people here tonight have spoken of the support that this community needs to give to Officer Donahue or officers who encounter events like this. I would add to that, that we need to ensure that every member of our I would add to that, that we need to ensure that every member of our community, it's incumbent upon every member of our community to support our officers every single day, not just on the days where we have events like this, but every single day that our police and fire go out to protect and serve our community. We need to understand, we need to respect that, and we need to make sure that these officers, every single day, know that we respect what they are doing for our community. So, thank you to Officer Donahue, and I fully support this measure tonight.
Thank you, Councilor Ringus. Councilor Mackin?
Madam President? Appreciate you all coming. I'm going to be quick, just so we can vote yes and get you all out of here. I just want to say, I wish Officer Donahue and his family all the best and hope as a town that we keep them in our prayers, and that's it.
Thank you, Councilor Mackin. Councilor Maglio?
Thank you. I too will be brief. When we ask all of you to go out and do a job, and then you do it, and then you get hurt doing it, you need to trust that we will be there to support you. And I absolutely am there to support you, and I am so sorry that this happened, and thank you, Officer Donahue, for your service. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Maglio. And I'd just like to add, to echo the sentiments of my colleagues, you know, it's clear the officers of the Braintree Police Department take care of our community with courage and compassion and at the highest standards, and in turn, it's our obligation to take care of them. We entrust our police to use sound judgment that is just, fair, and empathetic, and having our officers who exemplify these standards is one of the things that makes Braintree Police Department so well-respected and also a source of great pride in our community. And I want to add that in addition to the physical courage we've heard about tonight, it's a testament to the personal courage displayed by Officer Donahue, the leadership of the Braintree Police Department, the support of all of you and his fellow officers, that it's acceptable and indeed admirable to retire with dignity and support. And I will also be fully supporting this petition this evening, and thank you, Officer Donahue, and all of you for your service. So, with that, is there a motion for Order 22048?
Yes, Madam President. Motion that the town council vote to authorize the mayor to petition the general court for an act providing for the retirement of Matthew Donahue, a police officer in the city known as the town of Braintree, as set forth in the petition for special legislation filed with the town council on or about September 6, 2022, and on file with the office of the town clerk, further that the general court be authorized to make clerical or editorial changes of form only to the bill prior to enactment by the general court, and further that the mayor be authorized to approve amendments that shall be within the scope of the general public objectives of this petition. So moved.
Second.
Thank you, councilors Ryan and Hume. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please. Clerk Samino.
Councilor Barica?
Yes.
Councilor Flaherty?
Yes.
Councilor Hume?
Aye.
Councilor Mackin?
Aye.
Councilor Maglio?
Aye.
Councilor O'Brien?
Aye.
Councilor Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilor Ringus?
Aye.
Councilor Ryan?
Aye.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
That is unanimous. Thank you very much.
Madam President, motion for a five-minute recess.
Is there a second? Okay, we will now be in a five-minute recess. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Do we have to take a vote? Clerk Samino?
That's okay.
Okay. Five-minute recess. Yep. Thank you, everybody. The council will be back in session. Thank you, everyone. We will continue on with our agenda this evening. We are going to be moving on, going back to the beginning of the agenda and moving on to communications. So, Councilor Maglio, thank you for bringing the next two items forward for communications. I will note, we have two coming up. One is for the evacuation plan, and one is a charter review update. The evacuation plan is still with the Public Safety Committee, but an update is certainly welcome, and the committee will continue to review all the necessary documents when they are available. We didn't. So, with that, I will call 05322, Council President. Evacuation plan. And do we have anyone from the mayor's office who would like to speak on this?
Good evening, Madam President, members of the council. Clerk Samino, nice to see everybody. Joining us this evening on this matter are Police Chief Mark Dubois, who we heard from earlier, and Captain Robert Pistorino from the fire department. We also have with us Chief Jim O'Brien, and through the chair, I would invite them up to the podium to offer kind of an update and summary on where things are as it relates to the emergency plan and specifically the evacuation plan.
Thank you very much. Chief Dubois, would you like to start?
So, we've been working with emergency management on finalizing the plan, which I know is a priority and something that I think the council desires to have published. So, the draft that we have is fairly comprehensive. I don't know if you've all seen it. You haven't. It pretty much, I mean, essentially, it's a foundation document in the sense of, we can't, I guess, identify every potential scenario and situation that we would encounter with this. So, you know, in any of these emergency management plans, it's kind of a foundation or a starting point for us. And what we typically do on a daily basis, and the fire department can speak to how they prepare on a daily basis, with any of these incident management systems, you either build up capacity or you reduce it depending on the type of incident you have and the severity of it. For instance, in this case, if there was something to happen at the compressor station at 2:00 in the morning, it's vastly different than what would happen at 2:00 in the afternoon. So, these plans have to kind of anticipate that, so you can either add to it and get the resources you need, or, you know, reduce it, or just use the minimal amount. So, in this plan, the, I guess, the first step or the recommended reaction is a shelter in place, and the fire department can probably speak better to this. It's their expertise with the gases and whatnot that would be dispersed. But the first reaction would be the shelter in place. Probably the last thing that we would do is an evacuation. So, we do have an evacuation plan working through BEMA as what's listed, and that would be on the police department primarily, and we would need additional resources, obviously, mutual aid and whatnot, to affect it. But it's there, and it's what we do typically every day. And the communication for that, which is identified in the plan, would be what we do for, say, a shelter in place or a critical incident. For instance, how we notify the neighbors when something happens down at South Shore Plaza. It's the same type of scenario. It's an instantaneous response to an incident that we have practiced pretty frequently. So, we can have, I spoke to emergency management, and we're going to meet next week to finalize the plan. It's something that we can give a final draft to through the mayor's office, which I'm sure they can present to you, and you can review it, and should be something that could be published for, at least online, so that people have awareness of what our reaction is to any type of incident down there. Let's see, if you want to add anything to that?
Captain Pistorino has this material as Officer Braintree Fire. The evacuation plan for the contingency plan for the compressor station will mostly be handled by the police, and I came today to answer any kind of questions you might have about natural gas incidents and what the fire department role would be in handling those. So, that's why I'm here.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry, redone, Captain. Thank you very much, Chief Dubois and Captain Pistorino. I will open it up to any of the councilors who might have questions for our subject matter experts. Councilor Maglio?
Yes, thank you. It's really nice to have both of you here. I've had a lot of questions about this and a lot of worries, and it's an issue that comes up all the time, given the fact that most of us in East Braintree can see the bridge, which is where the compressor station is, from our kitchen windows, our living room windows. It's as the way that, as the crow flies, it's pretty close to all of us. So, having this opportunity is fantastic. Now, I understand that it's a draft that's coming out, so probably, a lot of the questions I was going to ask could be asked in a week, if they still need to be, based on what the draft looks like, because I have, the only draft that I was referred to was something that was created before the compressor station ever existed. So, I guess that would be my first question, is how much of this plan reflects the actual compressor station versus the dangers that exist, the tank farm, clean harbors, et cetera, on Quincy Ave?
This evacuation plan will be for the compressor station.
It's specific to that.
Excellent. Okay.
Sitco has their own, and I know Beld, all those companies up there, I believe, have their own. I'm also the chairman of the LEPC, and I've had meetings in the past where this has come up, and Beld has operations plans for shutdown if they need to, and so does City Service, Sitco.
So, is it a-
If they needed to, but they're not part of this plan. This is part of their own operations as a business.
Right. I want to be sensitive if others have questions, but I do have like a couple-
Let me just see if there's other councilors who have questions. Councilor Flaherty for the first time?
Thank you. So, I'm grateful to know that you've been working on all the details of a comprehensive plan to contend with this in Braintree. But of course, Braintree exists in the context of the South Shore, and if the compressor station were to, you know, have an explosion or a serious emergency, then our emergency response would need to be coordinated in some way with the other towns around us. Is there an entity, a regional entity, that Braintree should be working with to develop an emergency plan?
I could say from the police side, we do. We have Metrolec, which is a law enforcement council, so it's Metropolitan Law Enforcement Council. So, that's our kind of mutual aid resource, other than the surrounding communities just calling for mutual aid. So, when we have a big incident, I'll use the South Shore Plaza as an example, we probably had well over 100 police officers down there within probably 20 minutes. So, we work in conjunction with a lot of different agencies on a regular basis, regardless of the type of incident it is. And then I would say in a state, something like what you're referring to, I think, would be a pretty significant incident for the state, and MEMA would be immediately involved, the Mass Emergency Management Agency, for all the resources that we can't provide locally. So, there is a, and they have a, you open up an emergency operations center, and they have a web portal that gets opened up when a big incident happens. So, you're immediately in contact with state officials for state resources, like I said, whatever you can't provide for yourself and whatever you need. So, those relationships are all in place already for, I guess, you're asking for a very specific purpose, but they're there for very general purposes of anything we need them for, that they have resources for.
Good evening. From the fire department's side, obviously, it's made of three towns, the Four Rivers, Quincy, Braintree, Waymouth. So, what I have on schedule for myself is, and what I have done in the past week, is meet with Waymouth Chief Stock, Fire Chief Stock. I also want to have a sit-down with Chief Jackson in Quincy, and we're going to sort of piggyback on basically Waymouth, and also see what type of plan Quincy has in the event of any situation. in the event of any situation that may arise. In talking briefly with Chief Stock last week at a Norfolk County Chiefs meeting, he reiterated to me that Braintree's role, as far as the Fire Department goes right now, is basically mutual aid. So we would be response, a second-tier response. Depending upon the type of the incident, it may be our fire apparatus, it may be our fire boat. And that's what we're going to discuss in the future. You know, they'll, they'll rank it on tiers, as far as emergency goes. And then we'll come up with a plan based on that.
Thank you, Chief O'Brien. Chief DuBois, did you want to add something?
Yes, I'm just going to have Deputy Chief Cahoon, who runs operations and has also been heavily involved in the Metrolec, pretty much his whole career, can explain some of the resources that I didn't explain.
Thank you, Deputy Chief.
Hi. Thanks for having us. So as far as Metropolitan Law Enforcement Council, it's consortium of about 45 to 50 communities now, and sheriff's offices, that share resources for numerous missions. One of which is a marine unit. They have a tactical marine unit that works with all of the local harbor masters officers and police marine units that are on the South Shore. I know they have emergency preparedness drills with the Coast Guard, with environmental, with the state police, with Boston Police Marine Unit. So we would have a contingent of officers in the event of any kind of emergency down there, whether it be with Beld, the tank farm, Clean Harbors, there's some critical infrastructure in Quincy as well, including the compressor station in Waymouth, that we would have resources on the land and sea. With regard to the evacuation plan, the plan itself would be put into effect by the Police Department as far as getting people out, right? And it's what we do every day. We manage large incidents where we have to move people or keep people away from certain areas that are sensitive. It would be, it would be the same thing. And we'd be drawing resources, not only for Metropolitan Law Enforcement Council, but also every surrounding cities and town. And some of them would be experiencing the emergencies well, to the point that was made a minute ago. So there would be a numerous amount of resources that we could pull from. And I think it would be probably akin to stuff that we already do. Because we are constantly managing critical incidents, and just on a daily basis, we manage incidents all the time, where we have to pull traffic, where we have to get people out of here, things like that. So, that's all I have to add on that.
Thank you very much, Deputy Chief. Did anyone else have a question? Counselor Reynolds?
Thank you, Madam President. So, I think this may go toward the Fire Department. Right now, what is your worst scenario situation, understanding that this compressor station, and I'm talking specifically about the compressor station, that to me appears to be the most likely emergency situation that could create a great amount of damage to the population and to the infrastructure of that vicinity?
Yeah, an explosion. Natural gas is explosive in, under the right conditions. So, an explosion would be your worst-case scenario. Now, you want to talk about a cascading event where explosion leads to this, leads to that, leads, I mean, no one can predict that kind of scenario.
Right. Okay.
But at the compressor station and the lines that feed it, an explosion would be the worst-case scenario, as far as initially.
Understood. Thank you. And that is something that is being articulated and fleshed out right now, or that already has been, and that's something that you're working on to kind of leverage efforts that have been done by the town of Waymouth, for example, as the chief had expressed, to kind of piggyback on their lead, where it is in their own backyard?
Right.
Okay. And from, what is your biggest concern from a, let's just say that an escalation of an issue is created where MEMA is not as available at the outset of the situation? Is there, from a, and I'm thinking more in terms of the communication of an immediate evacuation of residents, and what I would consider to be, or what you consider to be, I should say, a likely blast zone?
I know the catastrophic blast zone for the plan that Waymouth has is a half-mile. And Braintree sits 6/10 of a mile. So, as far as the evacuation notification, again, that's the police.
Okay. But, but you work closely enough that as situations develop, other than just, say, absence of just a phone call, "Hey, this thing's ready to blow," versus-
Well, that's the thing. This isn't a natural disaster where a snowstorm, a hurricane, that you're going to have a week or two weeks to prepare for. This is something we're going to be reacting to, not preparing for.
And that is the worst-case scenario that I could imagine, is, like you say, that it's an unexpected, not a natural disaster. It is something that has functionally gone wrong with the facility itself. And then that would be my concern. And so, I know that these questions, I can't ask you questions that are going to delve into detail. You're still, if you will, working through the plan and revising and the plan itself.
And these plans are more like guidelines. We don't commit ourselves to anything ahead of time.
Yep.
These are guidelines, and these situations will be dynamic, and we're going to have to be able to change, and it'll be very fluid.
Decisions in the moment.
So we're not going to commit, if this happens, we're going to do X, because it's going to change.
Understood. That the situation will dictate what your decision paths are going to be, right? I understand that. So, understanding the context of that gives a greater level of comfort. Where I'm going with all of this is that this costs money. This costs money to do this. And I was very interested in the past in trying to get funding out of the compressor station operators, similar in the fashion that Braintree had funding from the Plymouth Nuclear Plant, from an evacuation standpoint, where they would provide to our, to BEMA, assets and monetary funding for preparedness and readiness for some likely scenarios. I know that the town of Waymouth and, I believe, the city of Quincy, had a very difficult time with the operator, when it came to either, one, acknowledging what type of emergencies could be created, what kind of dangers could exist for the three communities, in particular, in order, Waymouth, Quincy, Braintree, due to the geographical location and your assessments of what a blast area may entail. So I'd be interested, and maybe that might be something that the mayor's office would be, be able to provide for us. If there are any conversations along those lines, is there any hope for us to be able to secure anything? And has the situation, as far as the relationship with the communities and the operator, improved at all in those senses? Because I know they weren't very great. They weren't very good at the outset of this project. So, I don't know if I could ask the Chief of Staff, if there's anything she might be able to add for us this evening?
Certainly. So what I can say generally is, we are still engaged in active litigation with regards to the permits issued for operation of the compressor station. And so, at this point, there is no discussion about funding for mitigation. As you might recall, Waymouth is no longer participating in the litigation. They reached an arrangement with Enbridge and collected a monetary settlement. So it leaves it to Quincy and Hingham and the citizens groups, along with Braintree, to continue the legal battle against the operation of the compressor station. So I, my expectation is, with that active and ongoing, the willingness to enter into any discussions about financial support for the communities are unlikely. But at the same time, we do continue to receive notifications from Enbridge, as far as when they're going to have any releases or other activity on the site that may impact the neighborhood, so that we can continue to provide those notifications as they come in.
That's a great update. Thank you. And I appreciate that. That kind of gives, if I may, are you aware of any assistance from the state or the federal levels at this point? Or are they kind of sitting this out?
I am not aware of any current activity on the state or federal level to provide assistance as it relates to the compressor station.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Counselor Ryan?
Madam President, I guess, from my experience, a big part of any emergency action plan is implementing an Incident Command Protocol Center in hierarchy. And so I have a lot of confidence in the Braintree Fire Department and Police Department, all the different incidents we've had have gone through very recently, setting up that system. So I don't know if you folks want to talk about that a little bit, how that's kind of a general thing that you implement, the command center, Incident Command.
So yeah, Incident Command System is something the Fire Department works under. It's a scalable system. Unit D command, one guy in charge builds it out. And as Chief DuBois said earlier, it's as big or as small as you want to get it. And they use it for wildfires out in the West. I mean, it's a, it can handle any situation, because you just bring in assets as you need them.
Thank you, Captain Pistorino. Counsel, anyone else for the first time? Counselor Maglio, did you have another question, second time?
I have, I have pages of questions, but I'm only going to ask two. And one is really just a comment. So, you know, full disclosure, I have absolute faith in your command structures and in your training, and hope that you have protective suits and things and all of those kinds of things. What I don't have faith in is that 1/10 of a mile that I am, from that half a mile to where I sit with my dog and look out the window. That's what scares me, particularly since we are connected through gas pipes underground. So, above ground, we're 0.6/10 of a mile, but below ground, all those pipes are going right underneath our homes, throughout East Braintree, throughout South Braintree, throughout Central Braintree. I mean, that's what is also connecting us to the compressor station. And that's why I feel such fear about something happening, because there's something that could happen above ground with fiery embers coming at us and wiping us out, and also below ground with, like we saw in the Merrimack Valley. So, with those two thoughts in mind, I'm wondering, is there a need, and could there be some sort of an overall, like a full Four River Basin safety plan? Or is this what the draft plan is? But I think it's important that we have an assessment of all of those risks. Even, even the announcements that we're getting, they just, they're unloading 15 pounds of VOCs tomorrow, like into our neighborhood. They're releasing 100,000 cubic square feet of gas over this time that they're sending out a notice. And my fear is that people become numb to what this really means, what we're breathing every day, and what could possibly trigger an incident. So, while I know that's a much larger issue than an evacuation plan, that is the urgency that so many of us feel regarding this. So, when this plan is ready in about a week, is there an opportunity to actually review it, to do some work together, to talk about it, to bring in some of the citizens groups, to really look at this in a thoughtful way, to participate in this act of keeping everyone safe?
My only comment is, what you're asking for is far beyond our expertise. I mean, the assessment of any potential danger with the pipelines underground and whatnot is far beyond what we're capable of doing. So I'm not quite sure what you would like, but the emergency management plan for us is a reaction to a critical incident. So, there's zones of response, I guess. There's like three different zones with the radius of the compressor station, and how we, you know, initially, either shelter in place, or if it's preferred or required, it would be an evacuation. We have evacuation routes. And as the Police Department, we would work with any other responding agencies that we would need assistance from to safely evacuate people from either the immediate area that, you know, there's potential danger, or if there was an incident, almost probably with the Fire Department, like a search and rescue thing, if there was, you know, a potential hazard. And then, the second zone is just an expanded radius, depending on what the situation is. I mean, this could be very small, or it could be catastrophic. And the plan is really a reaction to that, as far as getting people out of there. But to assess all the potential risks and to have people dive into that, this plan is not, that's not what this plan is. And it's far exceeding our capabilities, to be honest with you.
Is there money available within the safety community to do that kind of an assessment that we could apply for?
We, we can certainly investigate opportunities. Both the Police and Fire Departments have an individual that works on seeking out and applying for grants. They can work in conjunction with Lorraine C. out of the Finance Division, to see what opportunities might exist. We can also work with BEMA, who has access to funding through MEMA and other emergency management organizations, to identify any potential funding sources that would support an assessment, such as the one that you're talking about, and kind of a document that would exist separate from the, the plan that our local public safety officials are working on putting together.
And then kind of be integrated.
Certainly. They would kind of work in tandem, is how I would see it.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
So, for the Fire Department, respect for the first part of your question. The hazard won't be over until all the gas is out of that pipe. And the only way you're going to get rid of an incident down there is they're going to turn the gas off, and the gas is going to dissipate. And then hopefully, the incident's over. So yeah, while it's underground, and it's leaking, or it was compromised because there was explosion, until it's shut off and the gas comes out of that pipe, there will be issues. As far as a comprehensive Four River Basin plan, that's way above what the Fire Department, that sounds like maybe a political-type thing, but it's definitely not something that the Fire Department's doing. And it's definitely not something that this plan is doing.
Okay. Counselor Ryan?
I appreciate what you folks are saying, and I know, you know, it's not your job to come up with, you know, all the dangers associated. It's your job to react and try to manage the situation as best you can afterwards. I guess, it'd be nice for us to be able to see, we're lucky that Counsel Maglio is very dedicated to this issue. She lives in East Braintree. And if anything, we could give her a copy of, if we do have, the report. And I don't really think, you know, the report has to be right down to every level of detail. It could be a broad report that says this is the evacuation plan. I really believe that the location, the company should be providing their plan, that could be part of the plan, on how they would shut the gas off if there was an issue, and, you know, limit the, what could happen. I'm sure they have an emergency action plan themselves, and that'd be good to be able to see that, and have that as part of the plan. And I think, hoping that we have this perfect plan, and waiting to have a perfect plan that answers every single thing, I've seen it a lot of times, perfection is the enemy of good. Like, what you have is, let's see, you know, if you have something that explains, like, you know, shelter in place and evacuate, and, you know, go from there, I would really like if, so I guess I'm requesting if we could get a copy of the plan at some point. And, you know, we do have people that are active, we have a good community group down there. We have Mike Lang here tonight, that's been working on this very diligently. And so just asking if we could get a copy of some plan that you have, when it's appropriate for us to get it, and not put any burden on you to try to come up with something quick or anything. But when you have it, if you could give it to us, and whatever works for you. So, I know some of the councilors get questions on these kinds of things, and just being able to give accurate, informed answers would be, you know, would be a good thing, like its coming and that kind of schedules, just like that reason, we're just respectfully requesting that. Thank you.
Happy to provide it when we complete it. We do have a meeting scheduled next week with Braintree Emergency Management and the Fire Department and the Police Department. So, we're actively working on it. So hopefully, it'll be rather quick that we can get it to you.
Whatever works for you, folks, just so we can have an understanding, and we can answer questions would be wonderful. Thank you.
And I have been briefed through Enbridge on the evacuation plan. Why it's not, if it's not public record, or if they're not required to release it, I don't know why it's not. But I mean, I know they do have one. I don't know you, how you would go about getting them to release one to you, but I don't know, maybe you could ask them. I don't know.
Well, I would think, through the President, I would think that if you have a facility where something goes wrong, you're going to have a tremendous negative impact- impact on the neighborhood. They should be sharing that plan with the neighborhood and with the neighboring police and fire and emergency personnel should all know what's going on with that plan. It only makes sense, you would think, but.
What their legal requirements are, I don't know.
Okay.
Thank you, Counselor Ryan. And just to reiterate, this matter is still with the Public Safety Committee. Counselor Hume is the Chairwoman of that committee. So we will have further opportunities to formally bring this up when we have the draft or final draft ready for review. I'm sure we'll be asking you back. And thank you for your time. Is there any further questions for our public safety on this?
Just thank you for being here tonight. And it's great that we could, you know, do two things at the same time and have you come and kind of help us with this issue as well. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you, gentlemen. Okay. Moving on to the next item on our agenda is 05422, Council President Charter Review Update. I believe the Chief of Staff is here for this item on our agenda, which is a follow-up from earlier in this year. Thank you, Chief of Staff, Tobb.
I'm very happy to report the much anticipated next meeting date for the Charter Review Committee is going to be on Monday, October 17th at 6:00 p.m. upstairs in Johnson Chambers. We have reached out to all members of the committee to notify them of the date and time. And absent any major scheduling conflicts, we do intend to move forward with Chair Peter Moore in that evening.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Yes, Counsel, I'm sorry, who, Counsel Reynolds?
You could take that conversation outside. I'm having a difficult time hearing the Speaker at the podium.
Excuse me. Mr. Lang? Mr. Lang? If you can please take your conversation to the hall. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Reynolds. Do you need to repeat?
I'm sorry, I missed part of that.
Oh, no problem, Counsel Reynolds. Monday, October 17th at 6:00 p.m. in Johnson Chambers, the Charter Review Committee will reconvene under the direction of Peter Moore, who was previously appointed to be the Chair of that committee. And notification has gone out to all the members of the date, time, and place. So absent a major scheduling conflict, we will be meeting that evening.
Thank you very much. Counselor Ryan?
So are all the original members of the Charter Review Committee still members of the committee?
That is my understanding. We have not heard from anybody that they do not wish to participate.
So we have some really good members on the Charter Review Committee, so.
I do believe one of those is in our presence here this evening.
There's Jeanne, yep.
Three. I was going to say council members excluded.
Counselor Mackin?
Just a quick question. I remember this, you know, being talked about a while ago. So when you say reconvene, when did they last convene?
So the commission had met prior to COVID and they were preparing to move into the public, public hearing phase portion of the process. They had decided it was important to hold multiple public meetings, just to engage with the community and gain as much and as widespread feedback as possible. They were not able to do that during the pandemic. So what I would anticipate is effectively restarting the process and moving forward with recommended changes in those public meetings.
Got it.
Thank you. Any other council members? Counsel Flaherty?
Just for my edification, can you describe the process that is expected to take place?
Certainly. So what, the guidelines set forth in the Charter are fairly generic. And so I think what the committee did, which I should clarify, I was, I'm not an official member of the Charter Review Committee. I had not participated in any of the meetings previously. But my understanding is that the committee came together, they began with a review of the Charter and kind of looking from their own lens as far as what recommended changes would be appropriate. And then there was a determination to hold public meetings to allow members of the public to offer their suggestion and recommendation for changes to the Charter. Once those are completed, that gets reported out and ultimately voted on by this body. And then it has to go on the ballot for resident approval.
Can you, is there a sense of the length of, the duration of the review, how many, how long it will take for the committee to review the Charter and make recommendations? And then the second part of that would be a public hearing, like, is this going, anticipated to take a month, five months, a year?
So I'm hesitant to speak on behalf of the committee. As I mentioned, I was not a part of it previously. I know Counselor Hume and I think Counselor Ringus were appointed to the committee. I don't know if there was discussion previously as far as timelines, but I would expect that one of the first things the committee will do when it meets next month is kind of establish a rough sense of schedule, how many public meetings, what's the date they expect coming back before this body, and kind of setting, setting the objectives for the committee in order to move forward.
Counselor Hume, did you want to speak?
Thank you, Madam President. I did serve on the Charter Review Committee, as did Counsel Ringus, but I think he came in later, if I'm not mistaken. Peter Moore did chair, does chair this committee, as Chief of Staff Tobb has indicated. We reviewed, we went through the entire Charter line by line, either as fast, as slow, as members wanted to. Every item was discussed. As Philicenter Tobb said, the next step was going to the public. But we felt very strongly with COVID that some people may not have access to remote participation, didn't feel comfortable. That's why we halted the process. In terms of expectations moving forward deadlines, I can't speak for all the committee, but what was discussed and what was my interpretation is there's no actual deadlines. It's if we, if the public wants to hold five, 10, however many meetings till they feel comfortable and everyone gets heard, that's what we were going to do. We weren't holding one money, one meeting, let the public come, whoever can make it, make it, whoever can't, can't. We didn't see, feel that that was fair. So we were, we were looking at probably holding multiple meetings and letting the residents dictate the process and how long or how short the residents want it to take. So there's no expectations, there's no timeframe in place. And I don't, again, I'm one member of the committee, but that was my interpretation.
Counsel Ringus?
I think just, just piggybacking that, I believe what Counselor Hume indicated was correct. I did come in towards the end of it. A prior counselor couldn't serve on it any longer. My understanding too was we were, much like the Master Plan Committee has been doing, there was going to be different times offered for these public meetings. We were looking at some evening times, possibly some afternoon times, and definitely there was speaking of some weekend times, so that folks could come in and offer their thoughts.
Thank you both. Appreciate that. Any other counselors have questions? Counselor Maglio?
So the meeting on Monday, October 17th, is that a public meeting?
So I, you know, I don't recall if an analysis was ever done, if, if the Charter Review Committee falls within the open meeting law or not. But I do expect that if there are members of the public who want to come and observe, they certainly would be free to do so.
Okay. And is there a mechanism for, to ensure that members on the committee have replied back to, I know that there has been emails that have changed. And so I, there's a member that, who her email has changed and it's no longer what it was because Bell shifted their, you know, clothes. So, so that impacts a lot of Braintree people. And so there, they may not be getting the notice that you're sending out?
Sure. I will make sure that whether by email or by phone, we contact every appointed member of the committee to ensure their participation.
That would be great. Thank you.
Certainly.
Thank you very much. Any other counselors? Thank you, Chief of Staff Tobb, for the update.
Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, we will continue on with old business this evening. The next two items are continued public hearings. So there are very specific guidelines for the timing around opening public hearings, which is why members of the public continue to see these on the council agenda. The inclusionary housing zoning amendment is still with the planning board. The tree protection ordinance is with the Ordinance and Rules Committee. So neither of these is ready to come before the council for a public hearing this evening. So as a matter of form, we must vote to open the public hearings and then we must vote to continue the public hearings. So unless any counselors object, I would recommend we take these up with one vote to open and then continue the public hearings to November 15th, 2022 at 7:30 p.m. There any?
Madam President, motion to open the public hearing for Order 22012 and Order 22037. So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Counselors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Samino, roll call vote to open the public hearing.
Counsel Erica?
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty?
Aye.
Counsel Hume?
Aye.
Counsel Mackin?
Aye.
Counsel Maglio?
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien?
Aye.
Counsel Reynolds?
Aye.
Counsel Ringus?
Aye.
Counsel Ryan?
Aye.
Nine in favor, zero, closed.
Madam President, motion to continue the public hearing to November 15th, 2022 at 7:30 p.m. for the following two orders, 22012 zoning bylaw text amendment, inclusionary housing and associated revisions, or take up any action related thereto. Public hearing continued to November 15th, 2022 at 7:30. And 22037, Council President, Tree Protection Ordinance, or take up any action related thereto. Public hearing continued to November 15th, 2022 at 7:30 p.m. So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Counselors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Samino, roll call vote to continue the public hearings.
Counsel Erica?
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty?
Aye.
Counsel Hume?
Aye.
Counsel Mackin?
Aye.
Counsel Maglio?
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien?
Aye.
Counsel Reynolds?
Aye.
Counsel Ringus?
Aye.
Counsel Ryan?
Aye.
Nine in favor, zero, closed.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on to our next item on the agenda, 22043, Town Clerk, call to the state general election or take up any action relative thereto. This order is to be submitted by the town clerk and voted on by the town council for the call of the state general election, which will be held on Tuesday, November 8th. Mr. Casey, would you like to give a statement on this order?
Good evening, and thank you for inviting me here this evening. As we all are aware that we have another election coming forward, it's November 8th, 2022. And as we do with every election, we have to notify the general public that an election is occurring. And so with this motion that is before you, what we are doing is meeting a statutory requirement to notify the residents of Braintree, the voters of Braintree, that we are going to be conducting an election on November 8th, 2022, at their voting centers.
Thank you very much, Clerk Casey. Any member of the council have any questions? I just want to add, residents who do have questions can go to the clerk's website for any of their election information, including their polling location. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Excellent. Go right ahead. Counsel Hume?
Are you still putting signs up at the, the former polling places directing?
Not any longer.
Why is it? Why?
Because the, for the last three years, they've been using the voting centers. And in July, I think it was on July 5th or so, I mailed out to every registered voter in the town of Braintree, every household that has a registered voter, a postcard informing them, as I was required by mass general law, that their voting precinct may have been changed due to the 2020 census redistricting. And whether you changed or not, you were informed of your new voting, polling location.
Okay. Any issues in the primary this time? People going to the wrong place or anything like that?
Well, you, it's a typical confusing that people aren't aware of what precinct they're in 10 years ago, last, five years ago, or even today. And I am anticipating that, that is going to occur for the November election. I'm going to make a couple of changes in the way we're going to be interacting with the voters at each of the voting centers. Typically, a voter would come in and have to find what they think is their right precinct. They'd announce themselves to the checking clerk. And then if they're in the wrong precinct, then they'd have to either shuffle over one or two precincts, or if they really were misinformed, they may have to go to another voting center. What we're going to be doing today is have four checking clerks, that a voter in a voting center could come in, go to any one of the clerks, register the vote, and they're going to be given a ticket that identifies what precinct that they are at. And they're going to take that ticket and go into the right queue and pick up their ballot from a ballot clerk. And then they'll cast their ballot like they normally do and deposit in the voting tabulator. I believe this will minimize any confusion with the voters. They don't have to go into separate lines if they hit the wrong one. We're going to, you know, address that issue right at the front. We're going to take that away from them, so they don't have to really...
So they have, they have to go through that point, right? That's new, that's something new you're doing for the November election?
That's what I'm going to start in the November election. I'm going to do a trial run when we do the, when we're going to talk about the early voting here in person. I'm going to institute that change here and to kind of debug it a little bit. And it'll give me...
And if a voter knows, they can just bypass that line?
Well, a voter cannot bypass it. They have to go first. They have to go to the, a checking clerk at all times. There's no other way around it because there will not be an issue about it unless they have their ballot ticket.
So if you're having four people with four, four books?
Four electronic books.
What if I go back in twice? How are you going to prevent someone going in twice and seeing a different person with that book?
Because you're going to be, when you, when I, Shannon Hume checks into East Middle School, she'll check into one of the stations to announce herself. And once the, whatever checking clerk will type in her name, they'll find out, did she early vote? And if she early voted, did she?
Oh, you're using electronic?
Oh, we do this all electronically, lab.
Okay, sorry. Okay, nevermind. And I thought you were saying books, okay.
Oh, yeah. When I'm talking, poll books, electronic books, yeah. We find that with the early voting by mail and in person, doing this on a paper checking book is impossible. This way here, we can determine how, if you grabbed a ballot, if you had a ballot, we can, to find out, did you send it back into us? And if that was the case, you would be, you're denied to vote on Election Day. But if you got a ballot and you didn't deposit it with us, then you had the option of destroying that and then voting on Election Day.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Clerk Casey. Do we have a motion?
Yes. The motion, upon the request of the town clerk, the town of Braintree, through the Braintree Town Council, it is so ordered, the call of the state general election, November 8th, 2022. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the town of Braintree is hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town who are qualified to vote in the state general election on Tuesday, November 8th, 2022, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. to vote at the polling places in their respective precincts to cast their votes for the following purposes, to cast their votes in the state general election for the candidates and political parties for the following offices, representative in Congress for the 8th District, governor and lieutenant governor for the Commonwealth, attorney general for the Commonwealth, secretary of state, state treasurer for the Commonwealth, state auditor for the Commonwealth, governor's council for the 2nd District, governor's council for the 4th District, senator in general court for Norfolk, Plymouth, and Bristol District, senator in general court for Norfolk and Plymouth District, representative of general court for 5th Norfolk District, district attorney for Norfolk County, sheriff for Norfolk County, county commissioner for Norfolk County, registrar pro rate for Norfolk County, regional vocational school committee for the Blue Hills districts, and four initiative petitions. So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Counselors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Samino, roll call vote, please.
Counsel Erica?
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty?
Aye.
Counsel Hume?
Aye.
Counsel Mackin?
Aye.
Counsel Maglio?
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien?
Aye.
Counsel Reynolds?
Aye.
Counsel Ringus?
Aye.
Counsel Ryan?
Aye.
Nine in favor, zero, closed.
Thank you very much. Moving on to 22044, Town Clerk, early voting or take up any action relative thereto. This order is required to be submitted by the town clerk and voted by the town council for early voting to be held prior to the state general election. There will be two full weeks of early voting available to voters, which will be held at Braintree Town Hall, right here in Cahill Auditorium, which is the designated early voting site. Clerk Casey, would you like to speak on this?
Yes, under the Acts of, Chapter 92, the Acts of 2022, which were recently passed in July of this, this year, there will be early voting. It's a mandated portion of the election process, as well as early voting in, by mail. I, this council has to make that determination prior. It was the recommendation... prior. It was the recommendation in a vote of the town, not a vote, a decision by the town clerk, to determine whether it was going to be early voting in person. But now it's taken out of the hands, and it's being done by the council. They have to vote on it. And in effect, you have really no choice to vote on it. You have to vote on it because it's mandated. But the only thing we decide here is where we're going to hold this. And my recommendation is that, as we always have, we can manage it right here at Braintree Town Hall, at the center of the town, which all voters in all the precincts can come on in and cast their ballots early. Early voting for the general election is for 14 consecutive days. It begins on Saturday, October 22, and it will continue until Friday, November 4. And if my friends in the cable booth, if they can zoom in on this sign, the folks at home, as well as the council members, can see that the hours we're doing this. As a requirement of the Acts of 2022, we have to maintain early voting during normal business hours. Therefore, you see that most of those match our normal business hours, though we do not have business hours on Saturday and Sunday. And for simplicity, I may the hours for Saturday and Sunday to correspond to our Friday hours, that we have a minimum of four hours of early voting in person every day. We will be having four and a half hours of that. Sadly, I have to announce that we only had 547 voters who showed up for early voting for the state primary election. And I'm hoping that the voters come and visit us here, the very simplistic process they have to go through. And I was expecting well over 1,000. And with, we have in this for two weeks, hopefully we'll have close to 2,000 voters come visit us.
Thank you, Clerk Casey. And thank you to your staff for all their work. Two weeks of early voting is a significant amount for the residents, so please, please, please get out, exercise your right to vote. Do any council members have questions, comments? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Motion, upon the request of the town clerk, the town of Braintree, through the Braintree Town Council, it is so ordered, in the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the town of Braintree is hereby required to establish, under the Votes Act, an early voting site to allow any qualified voter, as defined in Section 1 of Chapter 51, to cast a ballot for any biennial state election during the early voting period. At the recommendation of the Braintree Board of Registars, the Braintree Town Council hereby designates Braintree Town Hall, Cahill Auditorium, as Braintree's early voting site. Further, early voting hours shall be held during the days and hours described below. Day of the week, Saturday, date October 22 and 29, open 8:30 a.m., closed 1 p.m. Sunday, October 23rd and 30th, 8:30 a.m. open, 1 p.m. closed. Monday, October 24th and 31st, open at 8:30 a.m., closed at 4:30 p.m. Tuesday, October 25th and November 1st, open at 8:30 a.m. and closed at 7 p.m. Wednesday, October 26th and November 2nd, open at 8:30 a.m. and closed at 4:30 p.m. Thursday, October 22nd and November 3rd, open at 8:30 a.m. and closed at 4:30 p.m. Friday, October 28th and November 4th, open at 8:30 a.m. and closed at 1 p.m. So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Counselors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Semino, roll call vote, please. Yes.
Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Hume?
Aye.
Counsel Mackin? Counsel Maglio?
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien?
Aye.
Counsel Reynolds?
Aye.
Counsel Ringus?
Aye.
Counsel Ryan?
Aye.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you, Clerk Casey.
Okay, thank you kindly. Everyone have a great night.
Thank you. All right, moving on to 22045, National Grid Petition for Stores Ave. or Take Up Any Action Relative Thereto. I will turn it over to Counsel Ryan, Chairman of the Department of Public Works.
Thank you, Madam President. Earlier this evening, the committee on the Department of Public Works met and unanimously voted for favorable recommendation to the full council for 22045 National Grid Petition Stores Ave. or Take Up Any Action Relative Thereto. And I'll read them, I'm going to read the motion, and by reading the motion, I'm going to describe what's going to take place. So the motion is to relay approximately 520 feet of 2-inch coated steel from 1951 gas main with approximately 520 feet of 2-inch plastic in Stores Avenue, Abbott Street to number 35 Stores Avenue with staff recommendations. So Beld's recommendation is, please note, Beld has a 115,000-volt oil-filled transmission line located on Stores Ave. Engineering should be notified in advance of any excavation to be performed in close proximity to this line. Beld will provide onsite support and safety personnel at no cost to the project. Beld also has a 13.8-volt underground system on Stores Ave. This is in concrete in case duct bank to be identified through the digsave process. The DPW, the DPW has reviewed the subject petition and the accompanying plan for the gas main replacement on Stores Avenue. The work is being proposed to eliminate an aging gas infrastructure. Stores Avenue is not subject to the excavation monitoring, having been resurfaced by total reconstruction in 2009. However, the pavement is in very good condition. And as such, the DPW recommends the subject petition be granted with the following conditions. A temporary patch shall be placed immediately after the work. The street excavation should be saw cut, backfilled and compacted in 8-inch lifts, paved to match existing asphalt depth with a minimum depth of 4 inches, and 2-inch lifts to match the existing street grade. After maintaining the temporary patches through one winter, permanent restoration shall be completed the following spring. The permanent restoration shall be a curb to crown, again, curb to crown, mill and overlay with the pavement depth of 1 and 1/2 inches. Tac coat should be applied to milled surfaces and joints prior to paving. Finished joints should be treated with rubberized asphalt sealer. Any pavement muck is that or disturbed should be replaced immediately following patching. We also recommend the following requirements be added to the perimeter, if so be granted. National Grid must arrange a preconstruction meeting with the DPW to discuss utility corridor assignment. The new gas mains must not encroach on any existing utilities. Neither National Grid nor any of its contractors is authorized to close any street or to close a direction of travel to facilitate the work without authorization from the Department of Public Works or the Highway Superintendent. The Chief of Police can also authorize a closure for police or fire emergency. Construction zone traffic safety issues are to be addressed by using appropriate traffic control signs and devices, and the use of police officers for traffic control to safeguard traffic through the work zone. If a closure is authorized by the DPW, it shall not be implemented until signs and police officers, where needed, are properly placed in conformity with written plan prepared by the contractors engineer and approved by the Department of Public Works and the Police Department. So moved.
Thank you, Counselor Ryan. And just before I ask for a second, I do want to say, these motions come before us frequently, and Counsel Ryan, you're always so gracious in noting how much work the DPW does to protect our streets. So I just want to offer again, you know, there is so much complexity to underground construction and coordinating the different components to complete that safely and efficiently, and want to call specifically thanks to our town engineer, whose expertise and diligence, John Thompson, as well as DPW Director Jim Arsenal, the staff at the DPW, and the Police Department and Beld. There are a ton of elements that need to be coordinated, so it does feel routine to us, but it's not without a lot of work behind the scenes. So, so thank you, Jim, to you and your team.
I will second that motion.
Thank you. Counsel Ryan?
Thank you. So again, I want to point out that the DPW did great work on this. Couple of things worth noting on this. There is a 115,000-volt oil-filled transmission line that Beld has in this project area. And so we made it very clear to the petitioner, National Grid, that they need to coordinate with Braintree Electric Light Department, and they understand that. Also, it was brought up by Counsel Flaherty, that, you know, this is a very delicate traffic area in town, and they're going to pay particular attention to the traffic and the police details in place to ensure that traffic is safely moved through the construction while this project is going on. They're going to try to do this work this construction season, so we'll get that done as soon as possible. And the petitioner, National Grid, heard all of these issues, and they agreed to all of them. So again, good work by the DPW, working with the petitioner. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We do have a motion and a second on the table, so with that, I'll ask for a roll call vote, please. Clerk Semino?
Counsel Erica?
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Hume?
Aye.
Counsel Mackin?
Aye.
Counsel Maglio?
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien?
Aye.
Counsel Reynolds?
Aye.
Counsel Ringus?
Aye.
Counsel Ryan?
Aye.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you very much. Thank you for sticking with us tonight, Mary Moroney from National Grid and Director Arsenal. All right, we will now move on to 22046, Mayor, Acceptance of Donations or Take Up Any Action Relative Thereto. And I will turn it over to our Chairman of the Committee for Ways and Means, Counsel Reynolds.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So last evening, the committee and Ways and Means met to review this and voted unanimously for a favorable recommendation to the full council on Order 22046.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the mayor's office who would wish to speak on this?
Thank you very much. This request comes to us this evening from a very generous new resident of Braintree who was relocating from Quincy. He had a HP Design Jet 500 plotter with some available ink that he no longer had use for. He reached out to the town to see if we had any interest in accepting the donation, and after verifying that the equipment was in good working order, Mike McGurty of the Facilities Division identified great need for this. It will enable them to produce working size sets of plans in-house without having to rely on other departments or third parties to produce those materials, saving some money and generally making their operations a little more efficient. So we are looking for approval to accept this donation from Mr. Justin Situ, new resident of Braintree of the Design Jet Plotter and Ink for use by the Facilities Division.
Thank you very much. Anyone on the council wish to speak on this? Counsel Ryan?
Yes, motion that the town of Braintree be, and hereby is authorized in accordance with Section 53a of Chapter 44 of the Massachusetts General Laws, to accept the following gift upon the conditions attached in here, and set forth donor, Justin Situ, gift HP Design Jet Plotter and Ink, purpose for Facilities Division. So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Counselors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Semino, roll call vote, please.
Counsel Erica?
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Hume?
Aye.
Counsel Mackin?
Aye.
Counsel Maglio?
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien?
I would like to thank you to the residents.
Counsel Reynolds?
Aye.
Counsel Ringus?
Aye.
Counsel Ryan?
Aye.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Situ, for generosity. Right, moving on, we are now at 22047, Mayor, Authorization to Enter into Trittown Water Treatment Plant Ground Lease or Take Up Any Action Thereto, Relative Thereto. This is a public hearing, so is there a motion to open the public hearing for Order 22047?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Counselors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Semino, roll call to open the public hearing.
Counsel Erica?
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Hume?
Aye.
Counsel Mackin? Counsel Maglio?
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien?
Aye.
Counsel Reynolds?
Aye.
Counsel Ringus?
Aye.
Counsel Ryan?
Aye.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you very much. And with that, I'll turn it over again to Counsel Reynolds, Chairman of the Committee of Ways and Means, for their recommendation.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee and Ways and Means met and voted last evening to unanimously recommend approval to the full council for motion Order 22047.
Thank you very much, Counsel Reynolds. Chief of Staff Todd, would you like to speak on this?
Thank you very much, Madam President. So as the council may recall, kind of the legal journey of the Trittown Water District verbally started at the end of 2019, when we, when the council voted to authorize submission of the Act establishing the Trittown Water District. Since then, we have formally executed a joint powers agreement with Randolph and Holbrook, setting forth kind of the guidelines and parameters for the day-to-day operations of the facility. And we are now at the phase where we are looking to execute ground leases for the property where the new plant will be built and operated from. What's interesting, and that some folks may not know, certainly something that we didn't know, was that even though the new plant will exist entirely in Braintree's borders, some of the land upon which it is set to be constructed is actually already owned jointly by all three communities. And that is why you have two leases before you this evening for consideration. Both leases will be executed with the Trittown Water District. The Trittown Board met earlier today and voted unanimously to support executing these documents. The town of Randolph met last week and also voted unanimously to execute the leases, and Holbrook is scheduled to meet tomorrow evening, where we anticipate a similar vote will be taken. One of the leases is between solely the town of Braintree as the landlord and the district as the tenant. And the second is Braintree, Randolph and Holbrook as the landlords, as joint owners, and the district as the tenant. The leases are in large majority exactly the same. The only difference is on the lease that involves Braintree, we wanted to make sure to take care to protect our existing assets on the property and make it clear that these leases and the use of the land by the district for the new plant does not affect Braintree's ownership of those items that currently exist. The leases are scheduled to take effect upon receipt of, or issuance of a notice to proceed with construction. They are set for a 50-year term with one 50-year lease term extension option. The district as the tenant will be responsible for all of the utilities and all costs related thereto. That includes installation and maintenance associated with the property, and the district shall be responsible for any permit or permit applications and licenses that are required in order to operate the water treatment plant. This lease is not assignable, therefore it must remain with the district. And the district also is required to maintain certain fairly high-level insurance requirements to protect the town as the owner on the various parcels, and then all three communities as joint owners on the second parcel. Fairly standard by way of lease language contained in the materials, and the lawyers on behalf of all three communities, myself and Attorney Huff included, have agreed to the terms contained herein. So what we are looking for this evening is the council's authorization for the mayor on behalf of the town to execute both of these documents, so that we can submit them to the state in time for the next deadline relating to our funding, which is September 30.
Thank you very much, Chief of Staff Todd. Is there any member of the council who would like to speak on this? Counsel Flaherty?
As a member of Ways and Means, I will just say that, you know, I read the ground lease, and what I thought was, was good, was that even though, even though the responsibilities and the, the cost of building and operating the water plant are divided amongst the communities involved, Braintree has been designated the landlord in this arrangement, and I think that is good, that it was negotiated that way. And, you know, much of the language, that it's a 50-year lease with an option for renewal, is, is very, it's very sensible. So I think that it's an easy one to support, and it will have my support.
Thank you very much, Counsel Flaherty. Is there any, this is a public hearing, so is there any member of the general public who would like to speak? Seeing none? Who else? I will just also add, I think it does bear repeating, that coordinating this multi-town effort, it's, it's no small feat. And this is a critical infrastructure improvement for the residents of Braintree to have clean, abundant, safe drinking water for decades to come. So I will too be proudly supporting this motion tonight and thank the legal team for their work in helping us bring one step closer to finalizing this agreement. So thank you. Counsel Ryan?
Thank you, Madam President. We know the worth of water when the well runs dry. Motion to close the public hearing for Order 22047.
Is there a second to close a public hearing? Thank you, Counselors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Semino, roll call vote, please.
Counsel Erica?
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty?
Yes.
Counsel Hume?
Aye.
Counsel Mackin? Counsel Maglio?
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien?
Aye.
Counsel Reynolds?
Aye.
Counsel Ringus?
Aye.
Counsel Ryan?
Aye.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you very much. That's a close to the public hearing. Is there a motion for Order 22047?
Madam President, motion to authorize the mayor to enter into ground leases with the Trittown Water District relative to the construction and operation of the Trittown Water Treatment Plant on town-owned land. So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Counselors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Semino, roll call vote, please.
Counsel Erica?
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty?
Aye.
Counsel Hume?
Aye.
Counsel Mackin? Counsel Maglio?
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien? Counsel O'Brien.
Aye.
Counsel Reynolds.
Aye.
Counsel Ringus.
Aye.
Counsel Ryan.
Aye.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you very much. That is unanimous. Our next item on the agenda, 22051, Mayor, motion to accept MGL Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 22H, property tax exemption for Gold Star parents or take up any action relative thereto. This item will be a public hearing on October 3, 2022, so no action will be required this evening. With that, I'm going to move on to a report from committees and turn it over to Counselor Maglio for 05122, Committee on Community Planning update.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Counsel Berica. We had our first community planning meeting in, I believe it was four years, and it was exciting to get it started. It was a beginning conversation around three items that were referred to the Community Planning Committee, having to do with housing and infrastructure and, you know, transportation and bike paths and the environment and sustainability and air and water. So, it was a wide-ranging, robust discussion where we had a starting point, where we came up with some ideas around how to bring in some subject matter experts and how to continue welcoming the involvement of residents and to actually do some work around some of these opportunities that are in front of us.
Thank you very much, Counsel Maglio. We'll be looking forward to the next meeting.
Thanks.
Appreciate your work on that. All right, moving on to new business, 05622, Council President, open meeting law complaint or take up any action relative thereto.
Oh, you want to go?
I was going to just -- the council received an open meeting law complaint from Counselor Stephen O'Brien, which all counselors have received a copy. As the Chair of the Public Body, I requested and did receive a 30-day extension to have the matter resolved by October 20, 2022. I've asked the town solicitor to provide the council with the process by which these complaints are handled. So, Solicitor Taub, thank you for staying with us this evening.
Perhaps wearing a slightly different hat this time. So, just by way of background, I'm sure everybody is familiar, the open meeting law is what's commonly -- it's Master Law Chapter 30A, Sections 18 through 25, and it's what's commonly referred to as the open meeting law. The open meeting law was enacted to ensure and promote transparency in the deliberation of public bodies, and it applies not to all meetings of public bodies but to most. During the pandemic, the legislature also, as everybody is familiar, enacted temporary provisions or modifications to the open meeting law that would allow for public bodies to continue meeting with public participation, but while also taking into account the health and safety concerns that were created or caused by the COVID-19 pandemic. Included in the statute is a very specific process for how complaints or allegations of a violation of the open meeting law are to be handled, and everybody, as was referenced, received a copy of the complaint that was filed here. The first requirement is that a complaining party utilize the two-page form that is provided by the Attorney General's Office in order to provide notice of the complaint. That notification must be filed within 30 days of the alleged violation, whether on the actual date or the date an individual should have known a violation was to have occurred. And that notice must be filed with the Chair of the public body that is alleged to have committed the violation with a copy to the town clerk. Now, the process then goes on very specifically to set time standards for how a complaint is to be responded to. The first thing that has to be done, which was done here, is the Chair or President of the public body must disseminate a copy of the complaint to the members, which did occur, and then the public body must meet to review the complaint within 14 days of receipt. That 14 days may be extended through permission provided by the Attorney General's Office, which again was afforded here through the Division of Open Government to October 20, 2022, in order to provide a response. What happens next is the body needs to determine who is best suited or who it chooses to conduct a review and investigation of the complaint and make a recommendation as to whether a violation occurred and whether or not remedial action is appropriate, given the findings. That determination can be made by the body itself, or it can be delegated to another individual included specifically noted in the materials from the Attorney General's Office, Town Council, and that's Council SEL, not Council CIL. And so, at this time, I would suggest that it's appropriate for the body to determine who it feels should review the complaint and provide a recommended response. But again, regardless of who does that, it does have to be done by October 20 with a response in writing to the complainant, Counselor O'Brien, as well as with a copy to the Attorney General's Office, Division of Open Government. So, I would, Madam President, return it back to you for the council to determine whether it wants to maintain responsibility for investigating and review of the complaint or delegate such responsibility to someone, which could also be myself in my capacity as the town solicitor.
Thank you very much, Solicitor Taub. Counsel Reynolds, did you have your hands raised?
Yes. Are we taking a motion now for this action?
I believe a motion would be appropriate this time.
I take the motion that we not delegate this and that the council itself resolves this issue.
We have a motion and a second on the table, so we can do a roll call vote for that. Clerk Simino?
Certainly. Counsel Berica?
No.
Hello?
I'm sorry, Counsel Ryan?
Under discussion on the motion. So, I think we were recommended by the town solicitor that we should refer it to the town solicitor. I'm just wondering why we're not doing that.
I have, in my opinion, I think that the council itself should take this up.
So, we'll do a roll call vote. Clerk Simino? And this is a vote for Counsel Ringus.
I'm going to just expand on that. I understand that there's obviously two -- a bunch of different avenues that can be explored, one being the town solicitor, one being the council itself. My -- I understand Counsel Reynolds', I think, perspective on why he might want the council itself to delve into this. My personal opinion is, given that the allegations include members of the council themselves, it might be a -- it might look from the outside that if we were investigating ourselves or ourselves or members of our own body by a complaint from a member of our own body, that there could be, at least from the outside view of that 30,000-foot view, it might look, for lack of better word, to be a little shady, that we'd be investigating, in essence, ourselves. So, I do think this is the type of investigation that can be -- should be conducted by an outside individual, whether that be the town solicitor, which may be a motion that is made in a few moments, or it could be pursuant to the way the open meeting law is written, someone, some other individual. But I think for us to investigate a complaint from one of our own members against our own members, just, I don't think will look right to the members of the community. That's just my own opinion.
The second time, Counsel Reynolds?
I appreciate that is -- that is some sound reasoning. I do appreciate that. Is there a third way that you might suggest, other than?
Counsel Reynolds, we do have a motion and a second on the table, so.
All right, then I would -- my --
We need to.
Would I be able to revise my motion? I would respectfully ask if I could withdraw it and submit a new motion in its place.
You can withdraw, absolutely withdraw, and then whoever makes the next motion.
So, Counsel Reynolds, did you want to make a second motion?
I would make this -- I would withdraw my first motion and renew that motion that the State Ethics Office or a State Attorney General be able to review this. The reason I ask for that, the reason I ask for that, because I do think that this is something that the Mayor's Office, which the solicitor is also acting as the Chief of Staff, and there's no accusations here to the Chief of Staff on this, but I don't think that the -- that our, as the Town Council, unbiased council, would be balanced.
Did you have a motion, Counsel Reynolds?
Yes, that I'd like to have this go to the Secretary of State's or to the Attorney General's Office, whomever.
Point, go ahead, Counsel Ringus.
Could -- I don't know if the motion's technically been made, but I would ask if you could, Counsel Reynolds, could we perhaps withdraw the motion again, and perhaps Counsel President could honor that the fact that she's going to recognize you first to make a motion before anyone else, so there's no -- but I think if you remove the motion, we could have more of an open discussion about it, because now I'm being hampered by the fact that we're not really supposed to have a discussion after the motion's made. So, if you could withdraw your motion with the Counsel President to say that she would recognize you first, I think I could respond to that, if you'd be so akin to that.
I -- I thank the counselor for his recommendation, and I would like to follow that recommendation.
Okay. I'm going to just pause for one second, because I see the town solicitor. Did you want to?
I guess I would -- appreciating that, you know, there was no suggestion of bias, which I just want to make clear for the record, there would not be. This is a matter that is fairly clearly outlined in the law and the obligations of the body, and something certainly that my office would be prepared to do. It's something that we have done kind of less formally for other bodies within the town. I would just note, as far as the Ethics Commission first, I think that this is not something that would necessarily fall within their purview. I think it would be difficult to get somebody from that office to insert themselves into this process. As for the Attorney General's Office, that is actually the second level of review that is afforded to these complaints. So, if a complainant is not satisfied or disagrees with the result of the review conducted by the public body or its designee, the next step is for review by the Attorney General's Office. So, again, while I loathe to speak for other departments or offices, I would suggest that they also would be resistant to get involved at this stage, because they are, in fact, the second level of review that is afforded to open meeting law complaints.
Counsel Ringus?
But that's what I was going to say. The second level would be that an Assistant Attorney General would review it. So, I think the first level is generally before the Attorney General's Office. If the person that filed that complaint was not happy with the outcome of the investigation, they have the ability through that process to go up to the Attorney General's level, in which case an Assistant Attorney General would be assigned to investigate it.
On the record of having drawn my first motion and -- That is a question.
Are you on the record? Yes, like Clerk Simino was saying.
I will make a third -- I will make a second revised motion.
A new motion.
Third motion. Thank you. Thank you. All right, so.
All right.
My motion is this, and again, this is all due respect to the Chief of Staff. The Chief of Staff, by virtue of the fact that she is Chief of Staff, Chief Political Officer for the mayor, and also acts as the town solicitor, and the town solicitor, per our charter, is to represent the mayor's office.
Make your motion, Counselor.
My chart -- my motion is this. I would recommend that the Assistant Town Solicitor then review this.
I have absolutely no problem with that, but Attorney Huff is out on maternity leave caring for her new, healthy baby boy.
Counsel Ryan? He made a motion. Is there a second?
Well, we don't have an out, if that is the second.
Yeah, it's not an option, I guess.
It's not an option.
Wait a minute, let's just -- Counsel Mackin, did you have -- did you have a comment or a second?
Yeah, I would like to say a couple things.
We need a second for discussion?
Wow.
Is there a second?
Yes, second.
No, you made the motion, so you cannot second.
Is this the motion to have the Assistant Town Solicitor?
Correct.
Which is not possible to do right now, so it's not a motion. All right, second for discussion. This is ridiculous. Okay, so, my personal opinion, you know, I have an opinion on Counsel O'Brien's complaint, which I'll reserve for the moment. Me personally, I think we should discuss this and handle it amongst ourselves. As the person who made the complaint and people in the complaint, I think we could handle it all in-house. That aside, I actually do agree with Counsel Reynolds as far as referring it to the town solicitor, for the reasons being the end result of Counsel O'Brien's complaint, the motion he's making. If there was a ruling on it, it actually does impact a significant vote that was made for the town. So, I do think a party outside of the town, if we were to go and say someone else should be the arbitrator, that's what should be done. And then I would also, as Counsel O'Brien did make the complaint, I would like to hear what he'd like to do.
So, just to be clear, we have -- we do have a motion on the table. So, do we have a second? The motion is for to refer the matter for resolution or investigation to the Assistant Town Solicitor, be it noted she is on maternity leave.
Sure, I second that.
She did, he did. Counsel Mackin seconded it, so are you ready for a roll call?
So, we will do a roll call vote on that motion.
Yes.
Counsel Berica.
No.
Counsel Flaherty.
No.
Counsel Hume.
No.
Counsel Mackin.
No.
Counsel Maglio.
No.
Counsel O'Brien.
Upstayed.
Counsel Reynolds.
Aye.
Counsel Ringus.
No, but she was -- she's not able to do it.
Counsel Ryan.
No.
Seven -- I'm sorry, one in favor, seven opposed. Motion fails.
One abstained.
One abstained, yes.
Counsel Ryan?
I make a motion to delegate the resolution of the complaint to the town solicitor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. The motion is to delegate the complaint to the town solicitor. Clerk Simino, roll call vote, please.
Counsel Berica.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Hume.
Yes, because I have full faith in the professional and ethical treatment of this by the town solicitor.
Counsel Mackin. Counsel Maglio.
Yes.
Counsel O'Brien.
Abstained.
Counsel Reynolds?
Yes, due to, I believe, a conflict of interests of the Chief of Staff role being shared and also as the town solicitor.
I apologize. Was that a yes or a no?
That was a yes.
Thank you. Counsel Ringus?
Yes, by virtue that there is a secondary level of deliberation here.
Counsel Ryan?
Yes, because it -- yes.
Yes, seven in favor, one.
I stand corrected, my vote should have been no, based on -- based on my position.
Either way, motion passes, seven in favor.
Either way, the motion passed, but for the record, my vote should be no, based on my position. That is a conflict of interest to this person.
Let's.
Understand. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for being in attendance, Chief Solicitor Taub.
No problem. I'll be reaching out to members of the council for a follow-up on the matter.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Ryan?
Madam President, I'd like to refer to the Committee on Ways and Means, 05222, Council President, Town Audit, Contract Discussion or Take Up Any Action Relative Thereto, 222053, Mayor, CPC Appropriation, Town Hall Handicap Ramp, 773793, Washington Street, AKA 1 GFK Memorial Drive, or Take Up Any Action Related Thereto, 22054, Mayor, CPC Appropriation, Middle Street Trail, MAP 200601A, MAP 200201, Request for Additional Funding or to Take Up Any Action Related Thereto, Refer to the Committee on the Department of Public Works, 22052, Resident Petition Municipal Saw Connection, 71 Belvry Road, or Take Up Any Action Related Thereto, 22055 Comcast Petition, 117 Pearl Street, or Take Up Any Action Related Thereto, 05722, Counsel Mack, Discussion of Sidewalk Conditions at Canavan Drive, Albee Drive, and Gray Terrace, or Take Up Any Action Related Thereto, so moved.
Second.
Thank you, Counselors Ryan and Hume. This is for referral to committees. Clerk Simino, roll call vote, please.
Counsel Berica.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Hume.
Aye.
Counsel Mackin. Council Mackin?
Aye.
Council Maglio?
Aye.
Council O'Brien?
Aye.
Council Reynolds?
Aye.
Council Ringus?
Aye.
Council Ryan?
Aye.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Madam President?
Council Hume?
If I could, so we are scheduled to meet tomorrow night remotely to refer something. I'm going to ask, make a motion for same-night action to refer, this is just a referral to the Committee on Ways and Means, order 22056, Mayor, request for supplemental appropriation Tri-Town Water Treatment Plant or take up any action relative thereto.
Second.
So it's the same motion we'd be taking up tomorrow night, which is a referral to the Committee on Ways and Means, that we're just going to vote on the referral tonight rather than convene tomorrow night, just to take this up, open our meeting and close. No other action.
Thank you.
Madam President?
We have a motion and a second, so.
This is same-night action? We just need to see if anyone objects to same-night action?
Are there any objections to this same-night action?
Any objection to same-night action?
Motion we'd be taking up tomorrow.
No objection?
No objection.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and no objections to same-night action. So with that, we have a vote for this referral.
Council Erika?
Yes.
Council Flaherty?
Yes.
Council Hume?
Aye.
Council Mackin?
Aye.
Council Maglio?
Aye.
Council O'Brien?
Aye.
Council Reynolds?
Aye.
Council Ringus?
Aye.
Council Ryan?
Aye.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you very much. Our next meeting will be on Monday, October 3, 2022, at 7:30 PM. Please note, this is a Monday evening meeting due to Yom Kippur being on Tuesday, October 4th. Want to say thank you so much to B-CAM and the entire team for always televising and live streaming our events to bring the council meetings to the residents of Braintree. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Thank you, Councilors Ryan and Hume. Clerk Samina, roll call to adjourn.
Council Erika?
Yes.
Council Flaherty?
Yes.
Council Hume?
Aye.
Council Mackin?
Aye.
Council Maglio?
Aye.
Council O'Brien?
Aye.
Council Reynolds?
Aye.
Council Ringus?
Aye.
Council Ryan?
Aye.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.